Hey Christine, lead us away.
Okay, here we go. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and governors, March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. This meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The Town of Berlin will use best efforts to post an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. On the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel and approved minutes will be posted on mytowngovernment.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar platform in one of two ways, with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Should any board member have technical difficulties and/or lose access to the meeting, the meeting will recess for a period of time to see whether access can be restored. If not, the meeting will be continued to another date agreed to by a majority of the board or adjourned until our next scheduled meeting. I was a little nervous this morning because our power went out for about
Yeah.
five, 10 minutes.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. We have minutes, approval of the minutes for October 19th and October 20th of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee Information Session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. As motion.
I'll second.
Okay, was there any comments, questions? Nope. To me. Then we'll take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
Okay, motion passes. Under correspondence, we have to confirm a receipt of notice of retirement of Fran Gill from the Berlin Family Food Pantry. Did everybody have a chance to read? Okay.
Yep.
Any comments, questions?
She's done some great stuff for this town and that food pantry has helped out so many people in need.
Correct, and it continues to, uh, to help out. When I was giving out bags on Saturday, Mary came upstairs and we were talking and she was saying that there were more people unfortunately coming, but fortunately we have the ability to help them. So, you know, thank you to Fran for all that she has done. Very much appreciate it.
And I'm totally convinced Mary is going to do an outstanding job keeping that going.
Agreed.
Okay, then we will confirm receipt of the notice of retirement. Thanks, Mary, for drafting that.
Yes, thanks.
We also have on the agenda, the Conservation Commissioner, Commission Member Luis Gianda is seeking recognition for Bob Blair regarding the fall 2020 roadside cleanup efforts.
Yeah, so that all started, and Mary was part of it too, that we were saying that we should have a contest for like the most bags picked up. And I think Bob has been making his way slowly through town over the past weeks, just not this past Saturday.
So, no, he did, he did things on Saturday. He and I picked up 62.
He was there. Yeah, so Luis had just reached out and she rattled off a bunch of streets that he had already done. So we're just wondering if we could come up with some sort of, you know, certificate that we could present to him for everything that he has done for fall cleanup 2.0. So that's all.
That's fine. That's fine with me. I should have asked if you wanted to do some kind of a certificate or proclamation for Fran Gill, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Yep.
And then we'll see about presenting them possibly at another meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to general public comment. Looking for hands raised. Except yours.
Yeah, and I know, we wait until the peg section of the agenda to raise my hand. I got it.
Okay, not seeing any hands raised. We'll move on to our appointments. We have an appointment with our Building Commissioner, Richard Hanks.
There he is.
It's Richard.
Hey stranger.
Good to see you.
Likewise, good to see you all. So I just wanted to share a couple of updates with you all as to what's going on in the building environment as far as, haven't seen to talk to any of you all in the longest time with the pandemic going on and stuff. So I'll give you update on the River Bridge Apartments. They're nearing the end. They started March of 19 and now they're expected to be closed out probably the end of October, early November. That's when they want the final building done. They'll still have some miscellaneous small things going on, but it's, uh, it's been a good project and, um, it seems to be coming up quite nicely. Does anybody have any questions on the River Bridge?
Well.
I'm sorry. Margaret, go ahead, Margaret.
Through the chair. No, it's, it's more a comment than a question. I think today, uh, today we received, um, an email from NRP indicating that a subcontractor down at River Bridge, or they were notified that a subcontractor at River Bridge had tested positive for COVID. So it was good to see the email back from Mr. Trump, Bill Trump, explaining that they are adhering to the COVID safety protocols that we established in the spring. So it appears they are still on that, but Richard, just a word of caution to you, your inspectors, the fire prevention officer, to be vigilant when you go there. Okay?
Yeah, I, I, I forward that email off to Tom Dwyer. He's, Tom's a local inspector that's been handling the vast majority inspections over there. I just want him to be aware of it, but to your point, they haven't been very good once they had their first case back in the spring and I know is every time I go over there or any of us go over there, we have to get checked in with the nurses station and they check our temperature and ask us the typical million questions that we get every time we go anyways with COVID. So, so they have been doing a good job and, uh, you know, I think the project came out nice and, um, you know, it's again, it's finally wrapping up after 18, 19 months, but you know, the end is near.
Thank you.
Okay.
So then another, another update would be the homes at Highland Ridge, uh, which is the 55 and older community up off of Highland Street. I think the name of the street is Wheeler Hill Road or something. That's been cleared off. The, uh, the primary roadway getting into there is all installed, is blacked off. The site has been pretty much cleaned up, cleared, cleared off of trees and they've been doing a lot of site work up in that area, but as far as permitting wise goes, they're, they're a little behind as where they should be for us. There was a, there's a delay on, uh, the, the individual units need a sprinkler system and a fire suppression. And unbeknownst enough to them is that they didn't realize that that system is a design system from the pop house at the well, all the way down the roads and into the buildings where they're typically used to dealing with city services where they already have water on the street. So they work on the, on that design. Border Health had a few things for them, which I think they clean up the border health side of things. There is, um, conservation still looking for them to file their conservation restrictions and stuff like that. So they've been working on that stuff for probably the last four to six weeks, so I don't expect them to be much for long before they get started on that project. So again, that's 66 units, 55 and older. Be interesting to see how well sales go and stuff, but, um, as far as I know, they've had a lot of interest. They do have a trailer out there, the sales trailer for respective buyers to come and see what it's all about and stuff like that. As far as I know, they've had good attendance.
Cool.
Okay.
There, there was a hand raised in the audience, but they put their hand down. Um, so.
And I don't see them any longer either.
No, they were the Gucci something, Gucci gang? Gucci gang, yeah. Okay, I'll keep my eyes peeled.
Okay, if they want, if they want to come back to it, that's great.
Is there any questions on that one for Richard? No?
They're back.
Oh, it's an iPhone eight.
That's, that might, that, that could be Mary Porter because she said she wasn't going to be in town, but she could attend, I'm guessing.
Okay, I, I just promoted them for a second here. Do you want to open your mic? iPhone eight?
Did you have a question?
I thought I heard no. Yeah, I just, I don't know what that's about, so.
Okay.
You're doing great, Richard.
All right, moving along then. So, so another update is it's now getting time to start doing the annual alcohol licenses for, for our local restaurants and anyplace that serves alcohol. So those notices will be going out to the business owners, uh, probably this week. Hopefully we can start getting those inspections taken care of so that the select board can decide issuing, uh, the renewals of people's alcohol licenses. So, so those are all coming, those will be pending. Hopefully everything goes smooth and well. Poor restaurants have been having quite the year trying to just stay afloat. You know, not do a seeding or whatever they, everything they need to do just to try and keep customers coming and going. So, again, we'll be getting this, hitting the road, doing the safety inspections. That's a joint inspection between fire services, myself. So again, they should be getting a lot of sent out here this week, early next week, and hopefully we'll get scheduling those right away. So I know the board typically starts voting on those in the November, early December, if I'm correct.
December.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we just want to get ahead of that so that we're not the ones that are holding things up. An update on Highland Liquor Store, that is moving along. Seems to be a hot topic. Seem to get a couple of updates on that once in a while. They are nearing completion. The, I was there last week. The contractor said that they're trying to turn that building over to the owner by the end of this month. I think the owner is hoping to have a November 6th opening. That's their target date. To help to expedite things for them, we allow them to start installing their shelving, their refrigeration systems. That's typically usually after the contractor turns the building over. That's when that stuff comes in, but expedite things and work with them. We, we said that we don't have any issues with them getting in there, moving out along so that they can try and meet their target date of November 6th or the other month, whatever they're shooting for. So, uh, we're doing everything we can on our side, but obviously we can't control their construction, so it's up to them to finish what needs to be done and get all their inspections and certificates over to us for, so we can close the, the permit out and get them an occupancy permit.
Okay, good.
Now, I believe you're holding out the, the alcohol license until they get their occupancy permit?
Yes, the liquor license is being held for the occupancy permit. The one thing that I'm concerned with, I, I mean, I'm, it's concerning, but it's, it's a fact. They need the CO before they can start ordering the alcohol and stocking their shelves and getting it in. So we're just waiting for that CO.
Yep, okay, as am I. And then while we're up in the Highland Common area, the, we got the active medical. Active Medical is, um, going right next to the Emerson Hospital Urgent Care and somehow they partnered up the, the two of them have a dealing going together where they share resources. So they're, as far as I can tell, they're independent businesses, but they share resources. There's a doorway in between the two establishments that allow patients to go from one to the other. So again, they're sharing resources and it seems to be a good fit. That project's moving right along as well. I was there again last week on that one as well. They were starting to hang sheet rock in there. Um, they do have a lot of fit up at the end because every exam room has a sink and, um, you know, plus there's multiple bathrooms unlike the Highland Liquor, which is pretty much a big warehouse, open, couple bathrooms, there's not much of plumbing in there unlike again, the active medical does have a lot of plumbing and stuff. So they're probably a few months away. I would anticipate maybe the mid to end of December, maybe early January phase. They haven't given me any estimated timeline, but again, they are moving along and it's, that's coming up quite nicely as well.
Good. What, 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 what do we have left up at Highland Commons that's on the Berlin side? How many empty?
That, that I'm not sure of. Um, the, the Fit Factory just finished up. Um, that was last month. So I guess that's an update as well. The Fit Factory, that project kind of got on hold for a while. They pulled their permit over a year ago. It took a long time. The COVID kicked in and so business places weren't open, so they kind of put the brakes on the construction and they finally got it back going and they just opened, uh, two weeks ago, I believe was. So that took care of a, a big block of buildings. I think that original building was set for maybe three or four businesses, uh, but the Fit Factory took over the entire block. I think there's still a couple more shelves over there that haven't been fitted up that is still on the Berlin side, but I, but I'm not positive how many there are.
When you go up the road to BJ's from the light, the ones on the left, is that Berlin or is that Hudson?
You know, I'm, I'm not totally sure. I'd have, I'd have a look on the map. I think they're Berlin, but I'm not totally sure.
Yeah, because I think this, I went up there this week and there's a dentist. So on those three buildings.
Yeah, the, the first one says like dentist and braces or something like that on it.
Yeah, and then the other two are empty because there's a sign that says like only one left.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not sure if that building is in Berlin or Hudson.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
There's a question in the audience.
May, may I, may I ask, it appears we've got, we've got some attendance type issues tonight. So I would ask, um, the, through the chair, that audience members be recognized only after Richard is done, uh, because it appears we've got people coming and going constantly from the audience tonight. So.
Yeah.
Could be, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we also have timelines to try to keep too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Richard. Is there anything else?
I think that's, that's all I had. I, I did want to try and to give a year to year comparison of where we, where we're standing permit wise and revenue wise. Liam put together some numbers for me and what I wasn't anticipating or what I kind of forgot about was that last year we did have some pretty big hits as far as, uh, big projects that took root, one being the apartment complex, which is a very large permit fee, which is $330,000 all by itself. So without divulging and being able to pull out, um, those big ticket ones to see where we are revenue wise, I could say permit wise, we're, we're pretty much on track. We're doing about the same amount of building permits as we did the same time period of what I used was January 1st up until October. Uh, so issue with the building permits, we're still around that same schedule. It's just that, again, in order to just to get us to where we are as far as comparable revenue, I'd have to back out the hotel and again, a couple of the big ones that came along. So, so again, I don't have that number as to comparable revenue from year over year, once you take out that, those big one-time home run hits, as I would call them. Again, activity, uh, the, the construction industry is still strong. You know, so we're still, still seeing a lot of activity, a lot of inquiries, still a lot of interest. As I talked to other inspectors and other builders around, uh, everybody's busy. So that's a good sign, but unfortunately, um, everybody's busy, prices are up, building materials are sky high. So it's, it's a way to see where the economy is going to go with all this. If, you know, the, is the economy strong enough to keep supporting the high prices? You know, that there are enough people working to, to keep it, to keep things going too, so.
Yeah. How's the, um, development on West Street coming? Are you involved with that one?
No, West Street, what's, what's, what's on there?
Uh, I think there was.
Oh, that, yeah, yes, yes, there's a five, five lots of the.
Right, right.
Um, I'm not sure what, what snagged them up. They were hitting it pretty hard in the springtime. They were clearing the lots. They were getting the road, wet roadway and infrastructure in. I think they might have some pending things with border health. I think they're trying to reperk some areas. I think they decided that once it's cleared and they want to start relocating house locations. So that's the only thing I heard was that they were back possibly doing some septic redesigns on some of the lots. They did inquire maybe back in May, the process again in permits, but that, that dropped off and I haven't seen anything. They, they are still working over there occasionally. I do see activity over there, but nothing's firm has come through as to, uh, any start dates for, for building permits.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any more questions or anything for Richard?
I just, I just want to thank Richard for being the first of the non-big-three department heads to come and do periodic visits.
Thank you.
Now, now I'm good for another year, right?
Oh, no.
It's far off than that.
No, we got you now.
All right, um, I, I do see you got some stuff on the, um, did you want me to stay on for, for the next topic or?
That would be great, actually.
Because, because, because it's, um, historic, right, on the ball and house?
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll stay in the wings and if there's anything I can help with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Through the chair. Yes, I just, I just want to note that because you have already had the general public comment section of the agenda that I recommend that you stick strictly to the agenda items tonight. The board will certainly have a chance to discuss them all. But Mary is, we're going to have to promote only those people we know for sure who, um, who they are.
Okay.
I, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, then we're going to move on to historical.
Hello, Barry and June.
Hi.
We're here.
Hi, Barry.
Hi. Since we were in recently, um, I'm pretty much going to, uh, talk in the relationship to the things we've talked about before and, and some of them, uh, we don't have a lot new to talk about at this time. We have been, we have started work on our, um, our collections policy. June and I have spent a lot of time making lists of possible things to include. And, um, we've drafted some paragraphs of it, but we, uh, we aren't even at a point yet where we're ready to, uh, present that draft to the, to the commission. We, we should be able to do that within the next couple of weeks. And that's so that the commission can be thinking about it and, and, uh, we'll deal with it at our next monthly meeting. The, um, the survey, the structure survey on the bullet house is, uh, is contracted and set. Margaret had a, uh, call with him not too long ago, reminding him of his deadlines. And, uh, but as of right now, we don't have anything new to report there. Uh, that's due, uh, early December. The report on that is due in early December. So if we haven't seen him a month from now, we'll be, uh, we'll be on his, on his case thick down, um, because he needs to get it accomplished by that date. But that is, uh, that still is, uh, in effect and, and I have nothing new to talk about on it. Uh, in regard H back on the, um, in the curatorial building. We've been running around a bit on this and, and talked to a few people. We've gotten some, uh, feedback from the, uh, architect and engineer that originally planned the thing and a couple of other questions and issues that have been dealt with. So at this point, at our commission meeting last week, we voted to, uh, go with the, uh, $4,500 system, which should be adequate for the building based on the fact that it is a storage building rather than a, uh, place that we have people all the time. And, uh, so it's not one that we're making the people comfortable. We're making the objects comfortable. And, uh, normally we run that at about 60 degrees most of the year with it probably released upward a little bit in hot summer so that the system won't run quite so hard holding, getting it down. But as a whole, you want a stable environment and, uh, roughly 60 is a good one for the objects themselves. So we, with that in mind and with, uh, $31 to $3,200 left in the account that we have from the town hall project, we have a, uh, an individual contributor who is willing to, uh, offer the balance of that money, uh, roughly $1,400, uh, through the Historical Society as a gift to the society, to the town. And that we would, um, therefore be able to fund it in that fashion. We do still need to get a vote of the society to approve that, which I plan to do with, uh, through email communications this week. And at that point, once we have that okay, that whole thing will work. I would love, like it if you, if the select board would, uh, approve the use of the town funds for that purpose with the idea that the money will come in through the Historical Society to pay for the rest of that system so that we can arrange putting it in. Normally what we, we usually do with this is when the bill comes, we, um, we examine what the town has got available to, to pay the bill and then the society will issue a check for the balance and the two checks will go together to, we, we give our check to the, uh, accountant so that it comes into the, uh, so the treasurer knows our check is there when he makes the, the, uh, check from the town so that we cover the whole bill.
Yeah, yeah, the appropriation has to be here in full. Once it's in full, we can schedule the work.
Yeah.
So that does sound like a little bit of a difference in process between what Barry described, what you just described, Margaret. So I just want to make sure this doesn't get slowed up somewhere through a miscommunication of some sort.
All right, so this is how, this is how it, it should work. So the donation is going to have to come for the select board's acceptance. I mean, hopefully in the next meeting or two, um, the board will then accept the donation. The check will be turned over to the treasurer as a donation for the curatorial buildings. It'll be specific for the heating system, heating AC system in the curatorial building. Once Dennis has that and deposits it, um, it's going to be clear with the accountant and Dennis that the full appropriation is there for that one purpose and it could be spent then. So I hope that that clarifies it.
Did, did you have a question, Richard?
Or, uh, it was kind of a comment. Is, is there any, uh, rebates available? I'm assuming you go on a mini split system?
Yeah, unfortunate, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. I did look at that. Unfortunately, the rebates are really largely for residential, um, projects at the moment as opposed to governmental and small business. We could certainly look again, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leave no turn, no stone unturned, right?
That's right. That's, that's Richard.
Okay, um, are there questions from the board for, uh, Barry or June?
No, it sounds like that this, uh, getting the, the heating and cooling in there could still happen this year.
Hope so.
Yeah, initially, maybe there'll be nice days in January where we can help move equipment from, or stuff from places where they're at into that new storage facility.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I want to move it along as fast as we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Margaret, I'll be talking to you about that and, and work on getting.
Yeah, sounds good.
And so we can try to get it done so that the board can act on it maybe even next week.
That would be, that would be wonderful. Once that money's in the treasury and recorded, um, we should be good to start moving on that project.
All right, good.
All right. Well, if there's no questions for the historical, um, I want to thank you for coming.
Yes, thanks. Thanks a lot.
How far down is the town meeting discussion?
Couple.
About two more, about two more items. Well, one, two, three, three more items. We're going to talk to finance committee.
And I may hang in, I may hang in in order to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess, but I guess Richard's going to sign off then.
Richard.
Thanks, Richard.
Bye, Richard. Nice to see you.
Good talk to you all. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we.
Faces popping in, popping out. Oh my goodness.
We, um, if Janet, Janet, if you remain on silent, we will have a quorum of the, uh, we won't have a quorum of the finance committee presenting to the board. So just trying to keep things legal.
You want me to leave?
No.
No.
Just don't talk.
Presenting, what are we presenting?
They'll just be deliberating, that's all.
We not talk, that's asking a lot. Janet, just drive down to my house and bring the candy there and then your person will be over and then we all set.
All right, well, welcome, welcome to the select board meeting. I guess the first thing we were going to talk about was. I guess the first thing we were going to talk about was the new use of the free cash guidelines.
Okay.
Stan, a man of many words.
Margaret to get you started?
Yeah, well, Margaret's been the one who's screen sharing all of our, all of our documents regarding this. I'm hoping she is willing and able to do that again.
Mary, do you have it by any chance to be able to screen share? It's in the, it's in the drive. Sorry, I didn't come, I didn't come prepared with it.
I certainly didn't either.
Here, I have it.
I knew we were talking about it, so.
I have it up, do you want me to screen share?
Sure, if you've got it.
I want that screen, I think, share.
Way beyond my capability.
Did I, is that successful?
No, we're just all back. Can you not see what I'm sharing?
No.
No.
Not yet.
I wonder if, I wonder if, Mary, you booted me out. Try again, Mary.
Get out of here, you go ahead and you should be able to boot me out of here, let's see.
Let's see, share.
See, there it is.
Make it bigger.
Okay. Can you walk us through this, Margaret? Or, or Stan?
Margaret, I'll defer to you at this point if you're okay with that or we can.
Oh, it's, it's fine, I'll give a brief introduction on the, on the basis for the request that the finance committee adopts some free cash guidelines. So the purpose of the guidelines, as you all know, is to serve as just that. Guidelines as opposed to a formal established policy and procedure for use of free cash. There, until the finance committee adopted these guidelines, there really hasn't been anything formal or, or informal in place, how, you know, despite the fact that the finance committee has managed its free cash well. So the point, the administrative finance team, June, Dennis, Molly and I brought these as a, as a proposal to the finance committee to, to adopt them to be able to create a framework to apply some free cash. Right now, well, in FY '20, the town had a large amount of certified free cash. We actually expect the same and possibly even more this year because the town turned over well over $800,000 or rolled over over $800,000 in certified free cash from last year to this year, which is again going to be reflected in free cash. So it's advisable to establish guidelines before there are leaner years. It's advisable to establish guidelines that the finance committee and the board and the town can follow to, to actually create some programmatic savings in general and sta, general and special stabilization funds and to fund other important things like, like the capital budget, special articles like snow and ice deficits and other recurring special articles and to assure that there is a balance remaining in free cash. There is a balance remaining in free cash at the end of each fiscal year to be able to roll over to the following year to help stabilize certified free cash in the next fiscal year. So Stan, I hope that helped a little bit as a broad overview.
Well, absolutely, I mean, I couldn't have said it any better myself. So I mean, I, I think just kind of as in general, I mean, these are all, these are basically all things we're doing with free cash now or, or pretty, I mean, this is all pretty standard stuff as to what we're doing with free cash. Yeah, with the exception of OPAT, which is actually not established yet. I mean, we, we currently use it to fund special articles. We currently, we do currently use it to basically fund the capital budget because we're using it on things like cruisers and, and the things that come up under, that we, that we usually decide to spend free cash on. Capital stabilization is probably the newest one or the one that's not necessarily money that we had set aside previously specifically out of free cash in, in order to set that up. I think this is kind of a, a thing that's been recommended by the, the, I'm sorry, what's the, what's?
Capital planning committee.
Yeah, the capital planning committee, they would like to, they would like to have this as a way to, as a way to have a pool of money for projects that do come up and for planning. And then general stabilization, I think, is, is just kind of a goal that we've always said that we want to. It's just a formal way to try to put money into stabilization, which I think has kind of always been a a stated goal from finance and I think we've done a pretty good job with stabilization. I believe we have over a million dollars in there currently and this would just be a way to programmatically fund that. And then the free cr, free cash generation is basically just, you know, leaving some for next year, which is what we always, we never intend to, to spend it right down as it is. So this is a way to kind of force that to, to keep that in there. We purposely, I mean, we, we did wrestle around with these percentages a little bit and these are all, this is guidelines, so it's not set in stone. But, you know, we, we, we kind of tweaked them a little bit. This is, this is basically how they were outlined and then we kind of divided them up and added a little bit here and took away a little bit there. But I, I think the, the big one for me is that, that first one to, to fund special articles. I, I personally didn't want that to be more, to be a higher percentage because I didn't want to encourage spending on this and to say that this just means like, I think it, when people come to town meeting and they see all this free cash and everybody wants to spend it. I think this is just kind of encourages that, so I'd like to see this number stay low. And that's, it's kind of what I have to say about it. Does other folks from finance have any comments on this, Mary or Janet?
I can't talk, remember?
Oh, please, you can talk.
So I, I have a question if I can.
Of course.
The free cash generation, generation. I remember us wanting to make sure that number was enough where we didn't have to do short-term borrowing throughout the year because preventing us from doing short-term borrowing means we're not paying the fees and the interest on, on borrowing. And so I don't know how, as we go forward with this guideline, as that number, I don't know who, who helps figure out what that number might be and make sure that we stay above it so that as the cash for the town goes, I don't want to have to borrow from even our wonderful banking institutions in town if we can borrow from ourselves because it just, it saves a lot of stuff.
Through the, through the chair, the treasurer has the ability to borrow from general stabilization from the, for the short-term borrowing. I know Dennis is here in the audience and he has actually done that, I think, at least in the past year, if not the past couple of years. However, interest costs for the short-term borrowing, not necessarily the large amounts, but interest costs could actually, could actually be captured in the operating budget if the town so, so chose. Dennis can certainly speak to that. I don't know if he's been inclined to capture those costs in the operating budget as another line, but they can be. So, so Scott, to your point, Dennis still has the ability to, to borrow from, from stabilization for this.
Okay. So I have a question and it kind of piggybacks on Stan's comment regarding, you know, people see this money and they see it basically as an open checkbook. Margaret, could you go over, you know, at a very high level, what the qualifications are that if somebody comes up and says, hey, I need 120,000 to buy a, what do they have to go to that it's just, okay, here's your check?
Okay, yeah, let's, well, let's use the capital budget as an example. So this is only a small piece of the entire picture. The cap, capital budget begins with capital requests that are first vetted by the capital planning committee and then are vetted by the finance committee and the select board. So just because this says to fund capital budget, say $363,000, that is not an open checkbook by any means. All capital requests must go through the capital request review and approval process first. So any of these things are guidelines for the finance committee. All reviews and approvals are still required on all items. I hope that helps.
It does, it does.
And all capital spending and all special articles are passed by voters at town meeting.
Exactly, yes, that's the ultimate approval, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think Peg and, and also one other thing to direct to your question is I would say that these are really probably mostly guidelines for the finance committee and, and for us and where we're, when we're, and Margaret clearly, but for when we're, for when we're deciding, when we're putting together the budget, how we're paying for things. And it, and it's not, when we're, when we're getting to this level, it's not people coming forward and asking, you know, how, or how we're going to fund it. This is really for us deciding how we're going to fund it and using these guidelines to say that we only want to use this amount towards special articles and we only want to use this amount towards the capital budget. And those are the things, as Margaret said, that have already been vetted, have already come forward and, and demonstrated to be, you know, worthwhile things that we're looking to possibly fund this year. And then it goes through the normal channels of finance and now the town administrator to put together the budget and, and make sure that it all makes sense and make sure that we can fund it.
I mean, I, I think I reflect on my time as, as FinCom Chair, you know, if something like this existed, because there were years where people would say, oh, there's a million dollars in free cash and we're like, yeah, but we're only going to spend 600,000 of it because we want to save some. They're like, maybe you're just being stingy and they would at least get something like, no, that there's actually a policy and a rationale behind this.
Absolutely.
And not just that we're being stingy.
That's right.
And, and it's not even just that too, Scott, it's also that there is a, that, you know, that there is, that there's these set pools of money that we're, that we're looking to pay for things with. And it's not the full million dollars, it's, we're looking to spend on this portion, this amount and we're looking to spend on this part of the budget, this amount. And it's not just everything and then we did, and then we decide, okay, well, this year we're going to prioritize one thing and spend all of the free cash on that. This is, this is a way to divide it up a little bit more equitably and, and with the, with clear understanding that everyone can visibly see what we're, how we're trying to, how we're trying to put these monies to use.
Well, I, I for one think it's, it's great that you have some kind of a plan now for the free cash. I, I want to thank, you know, the, all the finance committee members and Margaret for working on this.
Yes, thank you, FinCom, they spent several meetings going over this and finally, finally adopted the guideline.
Here and 5%.
That's right. And there's, you know, just to note, to add an added note, that there is nothing in these guidelines that mandates spending from any of these categories in a year. This just provides thresholds.
So Margaret, along that line, do you have any idea, and I know that it might be early and Stan and Mary, Mary Porta and Janet, who can't talk, but do you have any idea of where we are? Like for special articles, if we've allotted 150,000, depending upon what's up there that right now we're going to spend X amount on it or is these just, here's a boatload of money, don't exceed?
Would you like me to take that?
Sure. Well, I think you're probably privy more to the request at this point or.
I'm going to use, I'm going to use one specific example that fluctuates from year to year. The snow and ice deficit is a great example. If we have a very, very severe winter, our snow and ice deficit could exceed the $150, $150,000. That alone could eat up that particular, the funding in that particular category. So that's another reason why all of these categories are subject to, to shifts depending on the finance committee's review and recommendations. So did that answer your question?
Well, then the other thing I would say about that too is that that would also be a, a perfect way to tell people that, look, we've had a heavy win, we've had a heavy snow winter, heavy snow season. We can't necessarily spend a lot of free cash on all of these other things. We had to spend it on snow. Snow and ice, a fair pool of money. We're looking at this one category and saying that this ate up that, it's just like any other budget. The, the snow and ice ate up that budget and we, now we can't buy the, the 40,000 we're looking for until, until we have a lighter snow year.
Yeah, I just don't want people to get the assumption that, oh, look, we have 363,000 in one budget and we only have 121, but hey, I need 150, so can you just shift, you know, 30,000 over? It's like, no, you know, or if we do, it's the process, it's just not, yeah, let me just cut you the check.
Right. From that standpoint, I'm.
That would be, that would be going, that would be reverting to almost a, I have the guidelines.
Okay. Do we want to talk about the next thing under finance? Which is the, the joint meeting on November 18th regarding the River Bridge Development's proposed warrant article?
Yeah, through the chair, I just want to thank Stan for agreeing to have the board, the select board attend their meeting on November 18th so that everyone can be in the same room to hear the, the presentation on River Bridge Development's proposed warrant articles. I don't know if you want me to get into those proposed warrant articles right now or if you'd prefer to.
Wait.
I personally would like a general, or at least a general overview of what, what it is they're looking for.
Sure, why don't we do that then, Margaret?
Okay. We got a newest email this morning from Chris Senni on their proposed articles. So where we're at here as of today is that we know that the planning board is going to be meeting tomorrow night and the hope, my hope for the board, the select board, is that the planning board will be able to come back to the select board with information from their meeting tomorrow night, whether it's recommendations on placing the warrant articles or, or other information that will help guide the select board in determining whether to place the articles or not. The River Bridge proponents, the Sennys, have expressed a concern with circulating citizen petitions due to COVID. That is obviously understandable that you don't want hundreds of people handling the reports or the, the petitions. But at the same time, it's incumbent upon the select board to determine whether or not the articles should be placed. So as it stands right now, there are three, as I see it, I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it appears that there are three proposed warrant articles as of this morning. The first one will be, would be to amend the zoning bylaws to allow for changes to accommodate their townhouse proposal down at River Bridge. The next zoning bylaw amendment they've proposed is to include drive-up facilities for banks, pharmacies and other retail and service uses. Both of these have to be heard by the planning board. The planning board is going to have to have a hearing on both of those. The third proposed warrant article is not a zoning bylaw at all. It is actually a bylaw proposing a third modification of the River Bridge Development Agreement. Prior to today, there had been five items listed, well, five proposed items listed on this proposed warrant article. As of today, I see that's pared down to only two items and those are the two items that are directly relevant to the townhouse proposal. So they're the two items that would have to be presented with the development agreement article in order to go with the two zoning bylaw articles. The question at this point, of course, is whether or not the board will choose to place, to place the articles on the special town meeting warrant without a citizen petition. So not under this agenda item, but under the special town meeting, which we'll be discussing with the board anyway, I am recommending tonight that the select board extend the closing time for the special town meeting warrant to 8:00 PM next Monday, November 2nd. This would allow the planning board to either present a written report and/or come to the select board's meeting to talk about where the planning board stands on the two proposed zoning bylaw amendments. I think that pretty mu, much wraps it up.
And I don't know whether we need to make any decisions at all tonight, but it's good. And I don't know whether we need to make any decisions at all tonight, but it's good. It's good information to keep in mind.
I'll try to look it up too, but I believe we have voted on drive-up windows at town meetings several times.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know when the last one was. And just to like get a sense of.
I think it was two meetings ago, Scott. I think we voted.
I thought it was too. I I think it's been three or four meetings. Even though I I personally am in in favor of of having drive-up windows in town because I think it's silly to have them two feet outside the town boundary. But I don't like to have the same articles or similar articles coming back over and over again.
I agree. I think sometimes you have to listen to what the people want.
Yes, and and through the chair, it doesn't appear, and I don't think I've heard from the Sennys that the drop the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the drive-up is or that the townhouse proposal hinges on having the drive-up.
Yeah, I because when we talked to him, I was I wondered how that was. I know they're pushing it up, but I don't get how townhomes need drive-up windows.
Right. What is the tie-in with the townhouse thing?
I I think it's just because they've they're low on revenue at this point.
Yeah, I agree. I listened to I listened to the presentation the other day and there is no connection. The drive-up would be either the gas station or the cafe. So neither drive-up is actually even on the parcel where the the zoning changes would apply for the townhouses.
And Margaret, do you know whether it can be done this way or or do drive-up windows have to be across the board through the town? I guess it's a planning board question.
Then, yeah, unfortunately, I can't answer that, but I would I would expect that it will come up at tomorrow night's planning board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm sorry. So what is it that they're trying to do with the townhomes then? So what is the what's the amendment trying to accomplish?
The amendment, it looks like it's several different things.
Well, one of them is to amend the zoning bylaw to convert up to 30,000 square feet of commercial space to 30 two-bedroom townhomes.
Oh, some more some more townhomes because that's the only thing that's selling. Okay.
And the other one.
COVID's killed commercial pretty badly.
Yeah, it has, but.
Then the other is the third modification, which would be something concerning the select board to the development agreement for townhomes. Because it's not in the development agreement, I guess, at this point.
Right. They were only allowed so much housing on the property and they've done that with the apartments.
Right. So I think it might be a tough one for people, but you know, it'll it'll be up to the select board to decide about the anything to do with the development agreement. And personally, I feel as though the we have some changes we'd like to make to the development agreement also and that I would prefer actually to well, like Margaret, I think you said in an email today, something about that this needs to go after the zoning.
Yeah, I do. I do believe it.
Passed over if the.
Right, if the zoning didn't pass.
Doesn't happen. But if but, you know, you're going to open up a a development agreement, don't you want to have hear both sides of the argument? So so there we have it.
I had previously recommended, and this is for the publics of the board is aware of this, I previously recommended or I informed the proponents that I was going to recommend the board against the board placing any of the articles on the warrant. In other words, requiring the citizen petition, but today, this new concern came came up from the from the proponents.
And it will be something we have to decide as guests as a board about whether or not require a citizen's petition for at least that third modification to the development agreement. So I guess we'll probably or probably all stay tuned for the planning board meeting tomorrow night. Be nice for them to help inform us.
Well, the deadline to submit any and all articles in their in their final form prior to legal review is next. If the board agrees to extend the time next Monday night, so the deadline, the drop dead deadline would be eight o'clock next Monday night.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we want to? Do we want to talk about a motion to that right now? Or did you want to wait? Margaret?
Oh, I would I would appreciate the board making the motion. Again, that is really to allow the planning board's report to be viewed and discussed by the board.
Right.
I also think just because we're I would like it just just for all kinds of other reasons. There's other articles that might be worthy of a little bit more reflection before we have to make a final list. So I have no problem moving that the the deadline for closing town warrant be moved till 8:00 PM next Monday, November 2nd.
Yes.
From its current time period.
Okay, do I hear a second?
That you do.
Okay. Then we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay.
Thank you, Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Thank you all of you.
Thanks, Shannon. Thanks, Dan. Hi, Mary. Nice to see you.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Where is my agenda?
So I think we're moving on to the town administrator report.
COVID, COVID, COVID through the chair. COVID, it's all.
Oh.
It's we I feel, you know, this is very, very honestly, on a personal level, it's very, very discouraging to see us heading back to where we were in the spring. The only the only plus, I guess, is that we've been through this once before and and hopefully we've we've learned some things. I anticipate a code red message going out tomorrow to remind residents to continue to be extra vigilant about all the COVID safety protocols they learned in the spring. And I am talking with the chiefs about the possibility of another public service announcement, putting it out just to try to get a little more visibility on the whole issue with with COVID and it's and how it's lingering and not a good situation, but everyone needs to be extra vigilant vigilant right now. I'm only gonna, I've given you a little information on where Berlin is at compared to the surrounding towns here. I provided the map. Berlin and Boylston are are doing okay despite what's happening all around us at the moment. So we have to protect ourselves. Now, we have a deadline of this Friday to submit the application for coronavirus relief funds round two, and we expect this to be the final round. This this round, I do expect to be submitting a request or we expect to be submitting a request for over $97,000. This, in addition to the $30,000 that we previously requested, still doesn't get us to half of the the maximum allowable funding Berlin could have had. But because we expect this to be the last application under the CVRF funding, we are going to make sure that we capture anything that could potentially happen in this in this next round through December 30th. I'm going to be issuing the IFB or I'm going to be working on issuance of the IFB for the library septic again this week. That's going to be far followed shortly thereafter by the I the IFB on the parking lot resurfacing. I want to give contractors plenty of time to respond for work to be done in the spring. The regional school district special legislation, last week I sent out the the district's newest newest version of the draft legislation and I also sent to the board the legislation with some proposed changes for Berlin that would capture the board's prior comments and concerns with the legislation, particularly the the polling hours and the references to district clerk. So I will ask that the board next week before, well, by next week, that the board review the draft legislation that I had marked up because I think it's time that this board come to a consensus on what it wants in that special legislation and that way we can forward it to the district and say, this is what the Berlin board will will find satisfactory. So you've got all of the red light, you've got the red lines and the clean versions in there. So I'd ask that that be included on next week's agenda. We've already gone through River Bridge. And I think that's all I'm going to, that's all I'm going to go over tonight to allow time for questions. Thank you.
Has Peggy and Scott, have you looked at the legislation? Have you had a chance to read it or do you need some more time?
Yeah, I started it. I haven't finished it, so I could use it to on next Monday.
Okay.
Let me know if you have any questions on that at all. It's all there in your drive for you.
I think Margaret did a good job of changing the language the way that we had originally asked her to. And you know, I I'm pretty satisfied with it, but I want to check with you too. So we'll put this on next week's agenda. Okay. So we'll move on to old business and review and vote to include articles for the warrant for the December 5th, 2020 special town meeting.
You all have the I'm through the chair, that you all have the draft special town meeting warrant. You have voted to extend the warrant closing time to eight o'clock next Monday. And my guess is that you all have some feedback on whether various articles should be included or not in the interest of keeping the town meeting efficient and safe for everybody.
Anybody want to go first or do you want me to?
Well, can we just go through them like one by one and then we can all be like, yeah.
There's only 15 minutes, 15 of them.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, keep it. No, get rid of it.
You want to speak to the Margaret?
I will, if you'd like. The first one would be special legislation legislation authorizing the fire chief to serve beyond age 65. This is required under the Constitution because statute sets a firm deadline of 65 years old to allow to allow fire personnel to serve. I have provided a summary. Chief has expressed in a prior meeting that he would be willing to give the town an additional year. And in the interest of getting this special legislation moving through through the general court, I think that this article is one that really should stay on so we can get it.
So the only is that the yellow of age of blank has been age of blank for several versions of this. Who and when and how are we deciding age of what? Because I don't I think some numbers, it doesn't matter. We're not talking about age of 140, you know, so.
Yeah. It could be, I have actually seen where special legislature, the warrant article has plugged in to the age of 70 or to the age of 68 or or something to that effect. The alternative, and I'd have to check with town council, the alternative would be allowing the position to serve until a date specific, but I think that the preference with town council would be until a specific age as opposed to a date.
So can we just say 70? Because I don't think Chief Clark is talking about wanting to stay on five more years, but you know, and and if we get to the point, I'd like to have it revisited and not just automatically happen. Unless somebody wants a smaller number than that.
Well, I I would just say that maybe you should check with Chief Clark if you want to put 70, see if that's okay.
Well, again, again, putting 70 doesn't guarantee that he's going to work to us until he's 70. It just allows it to happen.
He can retire prior to then.
I think right now he's talking about he's willing to put it in another year, you know, but I'd hate to play the 66 and then next year have to do this all over again.
Right.
How does the board feel about that?
I'm good with 70 and plus. I don't think Ava will let him stay until he's 70. So he needs to do grandpa duties. Yep.
Okay, all right. I'll and I'll talk with Chief Clark tomorrow about plugging that in. I don't want him to.
The line after the yellow.
Yep.
It says, or until the date of retirement or reappointment, comma, whichever occurs first, provided, however, that not deductions.
Okay.
Is that a note? No deductions?
That no, that no, it should be no deductions. Yep.
Okay. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you. The next article, sorry, anybody else have anything on our on that first one?
Nope.
Okay, unpaid bills of prior fiscal years, one one bill showed up. The proposal that I've put in here for the article language is to require a transfer from the current year's expense line to pay for the prior year's expense. That would alleviate the use of free cash to pay for an unpaid bill of prior fiscal years would require the department to absorb that.
And it and is that they have the ability to do that?
The town meeting has the ability to do that, yes.
Right.
No, but it's 429.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not going to break, right.
Yeah, 500, 449.
So why can't this wait till May? They waited till after the year to give us the bill. Why can't we wait till May to pay it?
Completely understand that, but it's the vendor, but it's the vendor who's not getting paid through no fault of the vendor. That's that's the only reason that I would I would recommend.
It's not the fault of it. So that means that we had the invoice in time. We just misplaced it until the after the end of the.
It was it was it went through a certain route apparently that did not did not lead to an encumbrance for the funds.
Okay. I.
I won't I won't ask for that story, but I no longer am as opposed to trying to pay it because it's not the fault of the vendor that it has to happen. You know, if a vendor waits an extra year to get us a bill, I don't feel like we should act fast, but if we messed it up ourselves, then we should.
It's it's the path that it took.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Hearing no objections, we'll move on.
Okay. FY21 capital budget, everything in here is, except for the town office air handler replacement, is a holdover from the annual town meeting. So in other words, these were items that were deferred from the annual town meeting warrant as agreed to by the capital planning committee. The air handler replacement, Dave is getting that. I that's why I only have an estimate plugged in here. But I did recognize that the board might be interested in putting that on this 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 town meeting warrant to get it purchased and installed before midsummer, late summer next year.
So Margaret, a question, since they're all labeled as free cash and since we just got done talking to finance about free cash, 1234 items, they're going to come out of that bucket that you appropriated to say, you know, this column had this column has this column has.
Great question because this is out of the ordinary, but 800, hold on, give me one second here. 800 and.
But one, two, and three are all from the first column, which is
They are.
non-capital expenses, which would put us over the $150,000 limit they wanted to put on that column.
So we've already exhausted column.
Well, I think they considered the contract service, the tree removal service as a capital item. They actually had been considering the hot top as a capital item still, although it is recurring.
Right. It was always my arguments too.
The amount turned back from free cash because of these unexpended amounts or partly because of these unexpended amounts was 865,632. That's the amount that's actually going to show up in the FY21 certified free cash.
So where so for column one that as Scott mentioned, you've got 150 earmarked. How much is coming out of that lot with those four items?
With these four items, the only amount that would come out of that is the hot top.
Okay.
$80,000 from FY20 at free cash. This is something that wasn't funded in FY20. I'm sorry. FY21, FY20, the current year, FY21.
So then FY, so the 150,000 in fiscal year 20 still remains intact?
It could if the finance committee says it could because this is a current year expense versus an FY22 expense.
All right. And then where are the other items coming from? What on the certified cash free cash, where are they coming from?
Well, the the four comes from the column specifically for four that said that that actually is that column that came up with that.
That's correct. Yep. And that amount you see on these on the special town meeting warrant, the draft, on that amount was the amount that capital planning committee had initially recommended minus $100 that. had initially recommended minus a hundred dollars that was appropriated from free cash to the capital stabilization fund from that, from free cash. However, the guidelines you see allow up to $121,073.20. So that number is certainly subject to change.
Guidance, not requirements.
Guidelines. That's right.
My whole argument against having those in the first place is they're going to hamstring us so that, that we're going to not do something the town needs to because column A is out of money, but column B has a ton of money in it.
Yep. That can, it can certainly be as requested by the capital planning committee if the finance committee and board agree. The air handler replacement is a current year expense also that didn't appear here, but all of these are FY21 expenses, not FY22.
Right.
I should say proposed FY21 expenses, not FY22.
Okay.
Do you want me to, do you want me to move on?
Yeah.
I do have a placeholder here for the purchase of the Laura property. I don't, I have not gotten new information from Concom on that. So I have no summary or anything provided or, or proposed funding sources. The next article is for.
So I don't know how much I'm going to want to keep a placeholder next Monday at six, eight o'clock. If we have no idea where the money is coming from or what the totals are, so.
Right, right. That's fine. It could be, it can be removed. It's the board's prerogative.
I'd like to have it available, but I don't, again, I don't want this sitting here on December 3rd with us having that final wording or final understanding of what's going to be on there.
No, it's, it's been, I, boards made it clear, next week is the deadline for the wording. And that's why I didn't, I didn't even draft wording for it. So the next article is that Dennis Fairby, the treasurer collector, has, has attained certification for, as a certified mass municipal treasurer and as part of the conditions of his employment. And in accordance with the vote taken by the town, oh gosh, might've been several years ago. The, he would be due a thousand dollars in additional compensation for that certification. The next one is, oh, the next one is to appropriate, appropriate or transfer from Highland Commons Public Safety Mitigation Funds a sum of money to conduct an expert analysis to determine the need of, of, for ALS services in the town of Berlin to weigh the cost of those services and the benefits of those services against the intercepts that we're currently paying and to determine service sustainability over the long term with ALS services. Because we do know there will be significant costs associated with it. The fire chief and I both support this, funding this independent expert study.
And do we have a ballpark? Is this 5,000, 10,000?
I think it'd probably be more, yeah, I think it'd be probably be more like between, I'd say between 7,500 and maybe $12,000. I don't have an exact number yet. That's why I didn't plug the.
And the source is likely free cash?
No, it would be public safety mitigation funds.
Public safety mitigation, okay.
Yep. Okay. The next one is, the next one, oh, the next one is a placeholder. If in the event that the donation does not come to the town for the HVA system at the curatorial building, if that does come and it's to the board next week, this article could be removed. Otherwise, if it comes after the fact, the article could be passed over at town meeting. The next one is to expand the purpose or the scope of the article for the board house renovations. That was article 16 of the 2016 annual town meeting to include design surveys and engineering. This will capture the structural survey cost and any other costs for any kind of architectural design or, or, or anything similar. This was requested by the accountant to put in, just to be sure that we are covered with the scope. The next one is a placeholder. I have gotten, I've received nothing from the board of health as far as a request that the town pursue a review of the 1870 Town Hall Systems, System Size and Design Capacity. By, by next week, that could potentially be dropped if there's nothing in writing. So I may, I'll, I'll put forth a recommendation next week on that.
This was something that it's been this way for such a long time that it probably wouldn't hurt to wait till annual town meeting, especially if we don't get any information.
Okay.
Especially if it's not a pressing need.
Yeah. The next is, is a planning board request for the scenic roads designation amendment. So it explains in the article that the town adopted the scenic roads designations for all streets except the main corridors, 62 and I can't remember, one other, one other major roadway. The planning board has asked for this amendment that would incorporate requests for tree removal, for tree removal for single family residential lots, incorporate those into driveway entrance permits. I've already contacted town council. I don't have a response yet. I actually think, you know, as I looked through this, I actually think this could be problematic because the scenic roads designation, that statute is really very specific. It specifically requires a hearing and I don't know that we have the authority to actually revise the statute. So I'm waiting to hear back from town council on that and we'll have a recommendation of the board next week. The rest of the art, the rest of the articles are proposed zoning by law amendments. And they're summarized here on the sheet. The first is it would require a home based contracting business to reside on the property if it's in a residential agricultural district. The second one would clarify how gross vehicle weight is determined for vehicles operating as part of a home based contracting business. The third one would allow a proposed square footage to be included in the calculation of a total floor area of a dwelling where an in-law apartment is proposed. The next one would be to allow the planning board to review modifications to common driveways that are proposed after the initial layout has been accepted. It, and it, this proposed amendments provides for public hearing if the changes deemed substantial. And then the final one would set a limit on the number of retail marijuana establishments allowed in the, in the town, not cultivation facilities. It would be limited to retail establishments. And then finally, I, when I prepared this, I was expecting citizen petitions, but I've already discussed with the board that there are two proposed bylaw, zoning bylaw amendments plus another article pertaining to the development agreement that's related to the zoning bylaw amendments at River Bridge.
Okay. Questions? Any other questions, I should say?
Margaret, are you going to get in touch with Concom or are we just going to let it sit? And when next Monday hits and it's not in, the placeholder is out.
Well, yeah, Concom has, I mean, I've talked to Concom. They do know, I actually talked to John, two members of Concom this past weekend and just reminded them that the drop dead date for warrant article language is November 2nd.
Yes. Okay. All right. Would you like to move on to new business?
Sure.
Okay. Then we have an appointment of John Mavertek to the select board vacancy on capital planning committee through June 30th of 2022.
So moved.
I was going to say, so moved or seconded now.
Yep.
Cause I paused.
Okay. Let's take a vote. Keith, I, Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
That's a vote.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Appreciate your volunteerism.
Mary, he goes by John, so it's J O H N on the in parentheses. Okay, thanks.
Okay. And we need to reaffirm James Holyoke and MJ states to the selectmen appointed seats upon the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Go ahead, Scott. I'll let you have this one.
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Margaret, the chair, may I just give up? I should have updated the board on this.
Right.
Yeah, the Community Preservation Commission Committee actually has its first inaugural meeting and training session on November 12th at 6:00 PM. So they're going to, we're going to have someone from the Community Preservation Coalition coming in to provide training to the committee.
Hey, I got a question on this. I saw some emails over the weekend. Do we need to do anything about Julie Lee coming in from rec? Or is that, no, okay. All right.
She's going to sit in for now.
Okay. Then we'll talk about the 2020, 2021 Common Victulars License for Muyas and Highland Commons. They've paid both years.
Alrighty. Yay. So moved.
Yeah, second. I just, I tried to figure out why, why, why it has to come to us. So yes.
So she can send out the license.
Do we all need to be down there to sign it or is?
No.
No, Chris can do it.
In your minutes, I'll just sign virtually with a COVID statement. Scott, get ready. This is the fall, the onslaught of licenses hitting your agendas start pretty soon.
And why sort of, why is the state making this happen? Why can't it just?
You are the licensing authority.
Welcome to the world of local licensing authorities, Scott.
We used to go through them individually, you know, a vote for each individually one. Now it's like, see that page? We voted.
And just, and just.
I'm just happy that we don't have to have, that they don't have to come here with us having two lawyers or them having two lawyers and it being a thousand dollar call for something that's totally not controversial.
That's right. Okay, then that motion passes and we're to board questions and comments.
Mr. Hawkins, no, 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 I got four now. So go ahead.
No, I have, I have spent, this has been a draining day for me. So.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make them quick, just a brief update for Halloween. So thank you. I'll see you guys Saturday down there. I don't know, 12, one, and we can judge. I reminded the Boy Scouts, ran into one of the leaders on Saturday for trash pickup. He was there for a bag. So hopefully he'll circulate that around. Shout out to Highway. Thank you again for putting up the bleacher. They'll put up the scarecrow post tomorrow. I shot an email off to the church to let them know. So that's one. I met with Lions last, the Lions Club last week to talk to them about a potential cornhole tournament. They said that they were in, but they would prefer to wait until spring and do it outside. So I'm back on their agenda sometime in February and we'll figure it out. So the write-up that I had wanted to give to the item, didn't know if you and Scott had had any comments or Margaret had any comments for that. Okay. All right. Let's go.
It looked fine to me. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the timing was good as far as a couple, wasn't there you needed to wait on?
Yeah, I, well, it was the, the solar poll, the solar one, which he signed off on. Yep, meta, meta. Well, I saw it in the item this weekend and you know what? To read it, you'd have no idea what it meant. So hopefully our write-up will be a little bit better. I'll get together with Jan. And then the last question that I have is probably a big question and Margaret, you're probably going to hate me for asking, but given that COVID is on the rise and special town meeting is around the corner and from our last email, border health seemed a little bit surprised that they were being asked to do anything. Where are we in terms of the safety of the building, using it downstairs, rooms, protocols, et cetera? Go.
No, no, I don't know. I think it's a great question and we actually have a logistics and planning team meeting tomorrow. Oh, oh, Mary, what time's our meeting? I forget. It's tomorrow. We're going to be meeting virtually and two members of the board of health are, are expected to attend. So we are going to be talking about all of that and, and then some.
One.
I think one o'clock, one o'clock. Thanks, Mary. Okay. So one o'clock.
So Margaret, go ahead.
No, well, we'll have a report back to the board for that. Frankly, and this is just me, I have not consulted with the logistics team. I am, we're looking at the firebase as the main town meeting space because that is by far the largest space here. So we're looking at that as a, as a socially distanced space and then potentially setting up additional outside areas covered, but outside with heating systems and things rather than bringing people all through the building just to be put into overflow rooms that really only accommodate a small handful of people each.
So do we know the numbers that you're looking at? I mean, now that COVID is starting to do this, do we know how many people can fit in the bay?
In the bay, socially distanced with the, too bad Richard's not here. He went through it actually with six foot aisles. It was a little over 100 people with six foot aisles and all socially distanced. So we'll talk more about that tomorrow. And just like with annual town meeting, we'll come back to the board with a plan.
So for border health, is that our border health and the Shoba border health? Or is it just us?
It's going to be our board of health members who attend the logistics meeting tomorrow.
And Shoba border health, do they have any say in this or any part of it?
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure. They could have say in it. Yes, we can absolutely share the information with them and ask them for feedback.
Okay.
So now she has sort of brought up something that I was thinking about and maybe you could ask tomorrow at the meeting, Margaret, is there something that might trigger us to have to continue or cancel the special town meeting?
Yes, the board would absolutely have that authority to be able to do that, just like you did in the spring. This is what I meant by deja vu all over again.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would have that authority. So yes, you absolutely could.
Yeah, I mean, I'd really like to hear feedback from people that are going to know about this.
Yeah. I mean, and I'm concerned too. I mean, you can talk about 100 people in the bay and then you could talk about other seating arrangements. But you know, how many are you going to, you know, put up? I mean, technically there's what, 2,300 people registered voters who potentially could, not that they would, but you never know, show up. And then you have those who medically, you know, can't wear a mask. And then you have probably a handful of people who just don't want to wear a mask that have to get up. So I mean, there's lots of considerations that you need to take into with how many, you know, how are you going to get them to the front? If they want to talk, make sure that their votes are counted, et cetera. So just have concerns.
And then there's the, the CDC guidelines as far as even six feet. That, that, that isn't good enough in some ways. So. You know, I, I'd like the fact that we're in the gray right now, but you know, we're surrounded by red.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I'm concerned too. What happens if it's a really crappy weather day, you know, and that, and you've got people waiting to get into the bay. So they're covered. I mean, what are you going to do? Put up a tent that has sides that probably cuts it down even more to how many people can.
Yeah, that would be if the weather, weather's really bad. I mean, I think, wasn't it, wasn't it the option of the moderator to meet there and say it's continued or something?
That's one of the options. Now, if the warrant hasn't been posted, which is what happened in the spring, the board has the right to actually delay, the, the board can actually delay the town meeting prior to the warrant posting. So that's something to consider over the next couple of weeks before that warrant is posted.
Yep. Okay. One other question that I want to clear up with you, Peg. The, the time, what time, what time do you want us there on Saturday for that pumpkin contest thing?
Two o'clock.
Yeah.
She said, she did say earlier, when she did our conversation earlier, but I'm assuming, because if we get there before people put up pumpkins and we see people put up pumpkins, we'll know whose pumpkin it is. So we should be there at two-ish or so.
You're good. Well, we'll leave up the details to you, Peg.
Yeah, I mean.
I just want to know what time to be there. Two. Okay.
I mean, I'm going to float around probably down there earlier, just to make sure that people have a tag on it. I'm not going to be handing out paper. I'm not going to be handing out a pen. I'll make a parent run back to the car and put a name on it and slide it underneath or something like that. But I'm not going to be handing out any type of physical here. Please sign this. Right. For that, you know, as I told Dave with the scarecrows, I have no idea how many there will be. Last year, there weren't that many. Who knows this year if people are just going to turn out in waves. So we'll either have to be creative and double side them or, you know, tie them to a tree, tie them to the bench, you know, I don't know. But no, I'll float down there a little bit earlier. The weather's supposed to be decent on Saturday, a little bit chilly, but I'd like to get some pictures too, and then get them over to Jan, get them to Mary, get them up on the website and then figure out next steps. I'd like to get some pictures too and then get them over to Jan, get them to Mary, get them up on the website and then figure out next steps.
Okay, then we'll see you two, two o'clock.
I have an item, sorry. Sorry, just, you know, the brain sometimes fires for a moment. Margaret, if, how complicated would it be to start? I'd love to get a commercial appraisal of all of our town buildings, like if they went to the public market, public place, you know, which buildings are, have commercial value, which ones don't. Not, not necessarily thinking I have any that I am actively trying to sell, but when it comes to like how much money we might be willing to invest in them. Or as we try to, which I think I've tried a couple of times to build a new building so that we can get rid of old buildings. Maybe we consolidate and try to find something. And then if that could be piggybacked on it, it's probably a slightly different appraiser, but our nonusable commercial vehicles in town, you know, what, what are they worth on a, on the private market?
Um, yeah.
And I don't need an answer off, I don't need the answer off the top. Yeah, I'm sort of planting the seed now, but it's like, can we get an appraisal of our town buildings? Which ones of them actually have value on the private market?
Okay.
You know, I, I don't think, you know, the, the current town offices and fire department building probably have a lot of commercial value, but maybe they do. We don't know about it.
I'm going to reach out to Mass Development and the Mass Office of Business Development on that to see if there are programs we could use for that purpose.
I mean, to piggyback on that, I had asked about that last week, you know, where Dave had mentioned, oh, there's a, yeah, there's a truck in this building. Yeah, and there's no, that's great. No one sees it, you know, can you sell it? Hello, what is the show on Monday night? You know, have them come in and buy it and go, I mean.
So, so we typically use Kelley Blue Book, using the age and the condition of the vehicle and the mileage of the vehicle. But for unique vehicles like an antique fire truck, for example, that's going to be a little more difficult. So we can, we can look at that. It'll be primarily from Kelley Blue Book unless the vehicle is extraordinary, the, you know.
Right.
Well, it's the same way with what the old ambulance that I think is stored up in one of the buildings.
Yep.
I mean, that's great that it's there. No one can see it.
Right.
So. Okay.
All right, we can certainly look at that.
Thanks.
Okay. We were planning to have an executive session, but I think we will wait until next week to, that was just to approve some executive session minute. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.